The community here and being with this council as we discuss these important issues this evening. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. comments, and I will ask our town attorney if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one individual, Joseph Cook. Do you want to read the preamble?
Yes, I want to read the preamble exactly like this is the little disclaimer we read every time. Come on up, Mr. Cook. Stand by, and I'll read the instructions and the disclaimer here. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda regarding matters that are germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but will not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics with our further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And I recognize you, Mr. Cook, but if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Joseph Cook, and I live at 2524 Wind Road.
Yes, sir. Let the three minutes begin, sir.
All right. Hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm sorry. I know you don't want me here all night, but I want to thank you for letting me speak. I've been to council meetings before, and I've spoken when Cambria, which was formerly the Walrus Buffalo subdivision, was being discussed. So I'd like to give a little history and an update. I've been concerned about pedestrian safety on Wind Road since day one of this process when we had our initial meeting with the Timmins Group. I vocalized my concerns then. At each town hall meeting, I voiced concerns, and each time there was a different reason why Wind Road had to be connected to the subdivision. The UDO states that the subdivision must have three entrances. It has four if you count Wind Road and six if you count the stub road in my front yard and the one on Lee's property. So stub roads can be counted also. I've been told by the planning director that the reason for connecting is in an objective perspective. That was the first email I sent with him. I still don't know what that means. At a town hall meeting, we were told that since there were more than 75 houses in that one particular section of the subdivision that they must have two entrances. However, during the special use permit meeting, the subdivision plan was changed, and there's now 75 houses in that section. But I'm still told that the connection has to be made for fire safety. We had a meeting back in November with the town staff, and we stated our concerns, and we felt how we kind of had felt disrespected by the town. But after the meeting, I felt like, gee, they're going to help me out. They really care. This was like a week before Thanksgiving, so I patiently waited. And since it was the holidays, you know, well, Thanksgiving passed, Christmas passed, New Year's passed, Martin Luther King Day passed. And after patiently waiting two months, I began prodding for a response, and I finally got one February 4th. It's a little after Groundhog Day. No changes to the road were in the letter. The letter stated that we can't put gates like it says in the UDO that you can put gates because it's a public road, and it must be connected because it says so in the UDO. I've asked many times since I received that letter, but nobody could tell me where in the UDO it states that the road has to be connected. I've been told it's in the UDO, but no one can point to that section. Section eight in the UDO talks about roads, but the applicability of that section is for new developments and Wind Road's not being developed. If Wind Road's kept separate, then it does not need to be improved on. However, adding 10 times the traffic on a road that's adjacent to a school and is narrow and has curves, steep ditches is foolish. And there's also a greenway connection to Meadowbrook Park in the new subdivision. So both ends of the road have, you know, potential pedestrian traffic. The town staff says it's happening because the council voted for it. The council doesn't care about pedestrian safety, neither does the staff, and no one will do anything, and it kind of is disgusting to me. The last communication with the town, they told me that to contact DOT, if I were willing, I could get the end of Wind Road made private and therefore be able to install a gate. After waiting for a reply from DOT for three weeks, and my second email was, please reply in the subject matter, I finally get a response, and the guy tells me I have to make the entire street private if I want it private. So I have to get every single person that lives on the street to agree to make it private, and that would be, you know, nearly impossible, some rentals and whatnot. So in conclusion, what I'm asking for is for someone to help us out or at least be able to point to what section the UDO requires the road to be connected, maybe give me some back and forth conversation instead of me asking a question after waiting two and a half months for an answer. In November, when I started this, there were no trees have been cut yet. Now they're all gone, just mud, plumbing pipes, and this needs to be addressed sooner than later, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I sincerely appreciate your persistence and your civil approach to this. I know it's been very frustrating. I believe there is some continuing dialogue. I don't know if we'll ever find the perfect solution, but thank you for representing your neighbors.
Thank you. I'm going to go for a walk on my street while I still can. Thanks.
Thank you. And that brings us to part F of the program, which is adoption of the agenda. Council members, I believe, they've had an opportunity to look this over even before this evening. Is there a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move. The motion was made by Mr. Matthews, second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. It seems to pass unanimously. We will move ahead. Part G is presentation. There are no official presentations this evening, which moves us to part H, which is the consent agenda. And again, town council members have had a chance to look at these. There's only two items that seem fairly routine on this this evening. Unless some council member wishes to pull one of these off for separate discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion about any of these items? Hearing none, I will call for a vote, a voice vote on this. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, the consent agenda is adopted. Which brings us along to part I of our program this evening, and it starts with, in its public hearings, and we do take testimony. And I'll read the little disclaimer, too. Tonight's public hearings are legislative hearings which do not require sworn testimony. However, all persons interested in speaking on one of these issues must sign up with the town attorney. Town staff will present a brief presentation followed by the applicant, and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals, same as designate, or representative to speak for the group. And item number one on here this evening is the voluntary contiguous annexation petition related to Waterfield Ridge Place. Our presenter for the town staff is our planning director, Mr. Jeff Kreisenberg. Would you like to give us a little background on this action?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yes, we have a couple of items for you tonight under public hearings. And let me go ahead and scroll down to that page on your agenda. The first case tonight is ANX 2504, which is for a couple of subdivided properties here on Waterfield Ridge Place, 500 and 600. You have the auto dealership right here at Greenfield Parkway. So this annexation will include these two properties as well as the intervening right-of-way, which is kind of establishing case law as kind of being an automatic, but we have found that when we're dealing with Wake County and actually doing the mapping of the annexations, it's helpful if we specifically call this out. So the total area is a little over 27 total acres. You have 10 and three quarters in the property itself and about 16.3 in the adjacent right-of-way. This is part of our primary corporate limits. And so again, this is before you today for annexation. The cases that were associated were approved some time ago, and they are nearing completion for their certificates of occupancy, as I understand it.
Okay, thank you. Council has looked at this before during the rezoning and other steps, and staff has been involved in the master plan, the site plan, et cetera, as we call. Do any of the applicants or the property owners wish to speak to this? Okay, thank you. And we will, and I'll check with our town attorney to see if any individuals have signed up to speak on this.
No individuals have signed up for this public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So now I'll recognize council members who might wish to ask some questions or make some comments. I'll start with Mr. Matthews down here.
No.
No, sir.
Ms. Behringer.
Yeah.
Mr. Dillinger.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vance.
No questions.
Hearing no questions and nobody signed up to speak, I now close the public hearing, and will ask council members for a motion and a second to refer this case to the planning commission for, or, excuse me, wait a minute, I got ahead of myself here. Let me back here. No, this will be to adopt the ordinance 2025-5336. We close the public hearing. There were no other comments or questions from council members, so we got the motion and the second.
I move to adopt the ordinance of 2025-5366.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Motion from Mr. Vance, second from Mr. Matthews. And if there's no further discussion, I will call for a voice vote on that annexation petition. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, annexation is, ordinance is adopted unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kreisenberg. Thank you, gentlemen. One of the buildings is moved into, the other's about to come out of the ground. We're very excited. Great neighbors out there. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And that brings us to item number two under public hearings, which is a zoning text amendment related to the residential special use permit. And again, our presenter is a planning director, Mr. Jeff Kreisenberg. While you're up there, Mr. Kreisenberg, fill us in on this one, please.
Yes, thank you. This is a topic that I know you all are familiar with. We've discussed it a couple of times in work sessions. So this is the official package for text amendment ZTA 25001, being submitted by the planning department on behalf of the town council to propose an amendment to the UDO exempting residential developments in major subdivisions located within Tier Two conditional zoning districts from the special use permit requirement in Article Four. Again, most of the information here at the beginning is information that you have seen before. As part of the background, at the last meeting, there was an inquiry about doing more research and getting more feedback. So you do still see the original results of staff's investigation into the UDOs for six of our peer communities nearby in Wake and Johnston County. And then both the legal department and planning canvassed other jurisdictions across the state, and you see the results in that table. It probably, it may not mean as, maybe as much to you as hoped. You see there's a lot of stars next to the yeses and the dashes. And I think the biggest takeaway from that is just that it is very nuanced. Every community does it a little bit different. So you do see that there are, in this first column for the single-family detached product, there were four communities that do require a special use permit in some cases. And there was different, I was able to talk to a few of them. It was a little bit of a smattered response as to why those, those conditions were still there. When I did talk to Hillsborough, the current staff actually didn't know why that was originally passed. Up in Maggie Valley, that's a very small community, so anything that's really done in terms of new subdivisions is very impactful to their community because even a small number of, say, 50 homes is a large percentage of a small population. Again, both Smithfield and Henderson County responded that in a few cases, they do require it as well. But a lot of folks did point to the conditional zoning process, and that many of them do tend to rely on that. That was a, you know, again, we've had that discussion about how the conditional zoning process can use it, and that was a very common response. But then you do see some communities, particularly the larger ones, that just don't. You know, I know in past, in a past conversation with a former Raleigh planning director, the response to me when I talked to him once about, you know, just even conditional zoning for residential was, well, there just really wasn't, there didn't seem to be any interest in that time in really regulating subdivisions. Just basically let them build was what he told me. So, you know, that was seven, eight years ago. But again, I kind of just say all of that to come back to, it really is dependent on what you want to tailor your particular community to the process that you want to go through. It is more common for townhomes and multifamily. You can definitely see that there's a lot more yeses in those columns. And again, it was a lot of the same concerns, I think, about that kind of development that those who did respond yes echoed that we have discussed here.
The question, with the special use permits we've done on the larger residential, have there been any that are completely single-family detached? I can't think of, most of the larger projects we've had have been mixed housing type. There's not one that comes to mind that hasn't been.
Not right off the top of my head, no. I think most of them have been.
Thank you.
A question in reference to Mr. Dillinger's question, what about Bethel Green?
Yes, that would be one. That would be one. And the original Bethel subdivision initially was going to have townhomes, but then they went all single-family. So those two, and then, no, that one didn't trigger. So yeah, I believe that's it. So under the proposed text changes, again, we just brought forward option C, but we did summarize all of them again for you, just so that everybody can remember the four that we discussed. But then C is put into the draft language here for the changes in 4.74 and 4.82. So we do have, we do have the modification here that if it goes through a Tier Two rezoning, that it would not require an S U P. And then we also put in the proposal to tighten up right here in subsection three, that instead of 10% difference, it needing to go back to the council, that we would reduce that to a 5% change. So if they were ultimately to change their plans by more than 5%, it would come back to you for new action. The rest of the report just, again, describes, as always, the rest of the process that it would have to go through. I'm available to answer any additional questions, but otherwise, the recommendation on the staff report is, or cover page, is to consider closing the public hearing after you hear from the public and debate amongst yourselves, which would pass it to the planning commission for their input.
Thank you, Mr. Kreisenberg, for the first round of the presentation there. My recollection of this in the broadest sense is this is an attempt by staff and council to streamline our approval process without losing control or without losing quality. It's finding that balance between getting things done and exercising enough supervision, enough control. It's a fine line. It's a challenging. I know that our requested action this evening is to forward, refer this to the planning commission for further consistency review, and at a future date would come back to the council for more discussion. So that being in mind, I'll now recognize council members who wish to ask questions, clarify this, and we'll start with Mr. Vance's end down this time.
No questions.
Mr. Dillinger?
I'll wait until after the hearing, public's been heard.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Behringer. Mr. Singleton? Questions and comments at this point?
Um, no, sir. Right in a second.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
No question.
Okay. And I'll ask our attorney if, if anyone has signed up, any individuals have signed up to speak on this topic.
No individuals have signed up for this public hearing tonight.
Okay. In that case, then I think I will close the public hearing, and we'll go back to council members for more discussion on this. And to be parliamentary correct, I guess we should get a motion and a second, and then we'll have the discussion before we take a vote. So is there a motion to refer this case to the planning commission?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Matthews and a second by Ms. Behringer to refer this case to the planning commission. So we have a motion and a second, and now we will have further discussion from the council members related to the details of this very important issue. Thank you for standing by, Mr. Kreisenberg. And let's start at Mr. Matthews' end this time. Questions or comments?
I don't have any.
No. Mr. Singleton?
Item I thought I saw, I may have, the, on design modifications, Mr. Kreisenberg, we changed the number from 10% to 5%. We discussed that previously, right? I can't remember.
Yeah, at the last work session, we had kind of talked about that, about trying to narrow that up so that if they, that 10% was pretty generous, particularly if you have a subdivision of almost 500 homes, that could vary by 50 either way. So again, trying to put a little more emphasis and clarity in that rezoning process that when you do get that master plan, and the master plan says, you know, 400, that you're going to get very close to 400, and it's, they're not going to change their plan wholeheartedly.
I remember now. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Sir, thank you.
Ms. Behringer. Mr. Dillinger?
Yes, I don't have any questions, just some observations. Just that we're considering eliminating the impartial quasi judicial step of the entitlement process because it seems duplicative of the legislative part of the process when the two are not the same. And eliminating the quasi judicial part of the process ends up undermining the intent and effect and opportunity of the quasi judicial process, which is to mitigate adverse impacts impartially in fact finding, in a fact finding and fact based way. Just three observations on that. If you recall, Amazon wanted to open early during COVID before completing all the required road and intersection improvements. Without the special use permit condition, the town would have had more limited recourse on Amazon opening early and fewer options to mandate assistance to the residents of Hunter's Mark and been unable to, in a position to receive the liquidated damages upon the breach of the completion deadlines that we negotiated subsequently, which I believe totaled in excess of $600,000. So a change would eliminate a legally sound avenue of recourse and accountability based on adverse impact and adverse impact standard, which is different than the standard in a rezoning. We had a special use permit hearing a couple of weeks ago where the applicant testified under oath that there were substantive conversations with neighbors that occurred after the rezoning, and there were mitigations to impacts not included as conditions of that rezoning. The reason for this is because the legislative rezoning process is not required by code or statute that the applicant mitigate adverse impacts. The only that they meet the minimum standard established by the UDO. The change would eliminate those opportunities for residents. Last point is, there's no quantitative data that's been presented to this body or to the public that the existing process has been detrimental to the town's development prospects, or that changing it would significantly improve the quality of the town's development prospects. It's a fairly dramatic policy shift with far reaching implications, but not a lot of support in the data. Also, with permit choice, we 100% lose the legal right and authority to mitigate adverse impacts with any and all projects currently in the pipeline. We cannot legally mandate mitigations for adverse impacts in the legislative rezoning process. In fact, impacts are not even the legal evaluation criteria for rezonings. All conditions are 100% voluntary in that legislative process. If we remove the impact mitigation, the impartial impact mitigation part of the process, we undermine the cooperative voluntary part of the legislative rezoning process because all conditions are voluntary. When you have both, this legislative and you have this quasi judicial function, the applicant would rather incorporate as many impact mitigations as possible as part of the voluntary collegial redrafting of conditions rather than leave it to an uncertain special use permit process. This is why our special use permit hearing so strongly mirror our rezonings, is that they want to get taken care of as many of those things that would come up in a special use permit and go ahead and voluntarily deal with them as part of the legislative process. But if you remove the council's legal right to mitigate impacts, the council no longer has the authority to mitigate impacts. We can make suggestions, but that's as far as we can go. So as we consider this, and it goes to planning commission, hopefully there are some considerations of other process changes that could couple the rezoning and the special use permit in a way that is not as burdensome, or there's not as large of a gap between the rezoning legislative process and the special use permit hearing. And those are my only comments.
Excellent observations. Mr. Vance?
No questions.
You want to run back another round again, any other thing pop up? Mr. Singleton, you might have another issue. I do. Mr. Dillinger, do you have other comments or observations? Well, I'll have to commend you, Mr. Dillinger, on the, on the idea of letting the planning commission review this with the idea of streamlining, continuing to streamline the process, make it efficient, but keep it effective. You mentioned coupling the S U P as part of the initial zoning rezoning kind of question. Those are the things I think we need to be addressing here. We don't want to have substandard projects, obviously. We don't want to lose control. We do want developers and property owners and business owners to look favorably at garlands of places they can do business in a similar way with a similar expediency that they encounter in other jurisdictions. We're trying to strike that balance. I don't know the answer. I know we're asking the right questions. I know staff is working. I have a lot of confidence in the planning commission and their ability to go through this. And for us to continue to find ways to, as you suggested, Mr. Dillinger, couple some of these processes together to make it expedient and fair without losing control. So I believe that's the challenge before councilmen, before staff, as we move ahead with these. Okay? So we close the public hearing. We've had discussion. I didn't hear any further questions or comments. So I guess the vote at this time is, are we in favor of referring this case to the planning commission for further review so that it would come back to the town council later for any final decision? Having said that, I think we'll, let's call for a roll call vote, just to make sure we're 100, 100% accurate. And let's start, see who made the motion originally, Mr. Matthews?
No.
Mr. Vance?
Was it Phil? I didn't make it.
We had a motion and a second before we started the discussion. Well, never mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I made a motion, Mr. Matthews.
Then we'll let you vote first.
Okay. I vote aye.
Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dillinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Well, thank you. It passes unanimously to go to the planning commission. And Mr. Kreisenberg, we hope you can present your performance to them again, help them make good decisions as they bring this back. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Which brings us to item J on new, which is new and old business, and the very first one on there is something dear to everyone's heart, the recommended budget. And there is some discussion. And this is a big deal, and this is the month where we make a decision to move ahead. With that, I'll pass this along to our town manager, Jody Miller, for an introduction, who will be assisted by our budget director, Sarah Warren.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Good evening. As part of our continued discussion of the proposed FY '26 budget, we're bringing back to you just some highlighted information and really looking for guidance from council this evening on how to prepare the budget ordinance. Council has discussed putting the budget ordinance on your June 17th meeting for approval. And so this evening, we'd like to answer any additional questions council may have and then get further guidance from council regarding some of the newly recommended funding requests. And so I'm going to turn it over to our budget director, Ms. Warren, who's going to briefly remind us the discussions we've had to date. So, Ms. Warren?
So, good evening, Mayor and council. This is just a reminder that our recommended budget is approximately 87.4 million. The recommended budget that was presented to you is an increase of 9.9 million over the FY25 amended budget. It includes a 52 cent tax rate, which maintains the tax rate of FY25. And it also includes a break. So a breakdown of that tax rate includes 43 and a half cents towards our town operations and eight and a half cents for our debt service. As we've mentioned before, this was a priority based budget. So we've been able to put together a budget, maintaining the tax rate and funding the two top priorities for council, which include funding for operations related to Jürgen Park, which is set to open in the fall of 2026, as well as funding for the Garner Fire Rescue merger with the town. As a reminder, one cent on the property tax rate is approximately 978 million, 100,000, not million. What we brought to you last week included one, an additional $1.3 million towards additional items that were identified by council in discussions at the work session and other public meetings. This includes funding 732,003 F T Es out of the FY26 unfunded requests. Details on this can be found on page 69 of the Recommended Budget Book. There's also further detail of each of these items and the information that's been passed out to you ahead of tonight's meeting. They include a roll card for our fleet division to enhance services at the garage. A program enhancements for our park services, which would help us address night and weekend activities as well as some of the waiting lists for recreation. An inclusive recreation services program, which would include one F T E to help advance some of the initiatives around inclusivity in our park services. Recreation management software, which would help update our current software in parks and recreation. A strategy and data analyst in that would help us advance our innovative efforts and other initiatives within the town. We're also recommending an additional $544,000 towards street resurfacing and an additional $100,000 towards traffic calming. If you recall, there's already $100,000 that's been proposed. So this would bring the total to $200,000 towards traffic calming efforts. Those more information on both of those can be found on pages 140 and 183 of the budget book, as well as additional information that's been provided to you. So what we're here tonight is support of these recommendations of the 1.38 million to move forward with those, affirming any the proposed fee changes for parks that have been presented to you and support for the budget adoption and preparation of the associated ordinances on June 17. I'll also note that we have not received any additional public comments ahead of tonight's meeting. So everything you have as far as public comment is up to date.
Hey, Ms. Miller, you want to make any other comments or?
That just briefly highlights where we are in our budget discussion. And as Ms. Warren said, really looking for guidance from the council this evening as to how to prepare the budget ordinance for your June 17 meeting in terms of the additional funding that's available and some of the recommendations that the staff has provided. And then in addition to that, just confirmation that the council supports the fee changes for our Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Department that have been proposed and to make sure they're added to the fee schedule as part of your approval on June 17.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And before passing along to council members, I just want to restate the same thing that's already been stated here. It was slightly different spin on it. We've been working on this budget for a long time. Sarah and her staff work on it year round, Mr. Finch continually. In the last few months, everybody has really bared down on it. It's a huge thing. It's a growing thing. It's unbelievably complex. What we're talking about here tonight is 1.38 million dollars that I'm going to call kind of found money. It was not included in the first drafts, but thanks to the close attention of staff, council members and citizens, that they helped us identify where we could shape these numbers up a little more accurately. So now, even though council had previously, at staff's request, identified some what we would call our dream list. If we had more money, we'd like to spend it on these things. We had those as standby. Most of these reflect what we had on our wish list if suddenly some other things got tightened up. Some things got clarified, again, thanks to everyone who put their head down and worked hard and long hours to make sure this was as accurate as possible, as transparent and involving all the citizens as much as possible. We've still got two more weeks with possible input from citizens and staff as well as we put the finishing touches on this, hopefully to be able to pass the budget two weeks from tonight. But saying all that, these are some ideas that had been kicked around for several months of things we would like to see funded. And now we have that mechanism. And staff has prepared a sample motion that identifies those seven items with specific expenditures beside them that council members have in front of them. So that being said, there certainly seems to be time for council members to ask questions, provide feedback, and then we will eventually probably ask for a motion and a second to provide direction on this piece. We're not voting on the budget tonight, but what to do with the 1.38, that's what we will be asking to give guidance on. And it may be the shape of a motion. So saying all that and say this, let's start at Mr. Matthews' end to see if there's other questions or comments about this piece of the budget puzzle that we're working on right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank staff, the whole team for your efforts. I know it's been a challenge. And I remember a lot of times I reflect back being a county commissioner. And the first time I was chairman, we had our first billion dollar budget. And it got to that figure quite quickly as the county grew. And as our town is growing, probably Mr. Singh can look back when it's probably 25% of what this amount is totaled here. But appreciate the fine job y'all have done. We are growing and all the needs here, everything's listed here. I know we talked about it at the retreat work session, trying to put it all together. And I'm okay with the list, Mr. Mayor, and the numbers are there with it. And I have no issues with including everything that's listed here. That's just speaking for me.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton, questions or feedback?
Staff has been working on it for months. We've only had it about a month, so we have to remember that. I stated last time how I felt in regards to one of the positions that's not listed, and I will stand by that. So if we're not going to include a position to help with not only neighborhood, as a neighborhood partner, neighborhood manager, and affordable housing manager, I won't be supporting the budget.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Behringer, comments, feedback?
No, I'm just going to thank staff for the hard work that they've done. And to see that additional monies were found to support some other important issues to us is very gratifying. It's not something we see every day. So I support the list that's before us. And again, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. And Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions on the one position, the parks, the program enhancement position. As one full time employee, there's not a breakdown of salary. There's other sort of programmatic things, but I don't see a breakdown of that. So that's a little hard to figure out how that's going to roll over and into the budget. Is that, what's the salary for that position? Do we know?
I don't know right off the top of my head, but I do know that the bulk of the request is actually in operating costs. So the position is a recreation specialist. And so a lot of those, the costs are related to temp salaries, additional operating costs to address some of the needs, be it related to, I think we've discussed some of the challenges with findings, referees to work different events. This would also help us with some of the partnerships that we have for some of the recreation sports leagues. So the salary is really a very small piece of that. But we can certainly provide that if that's something that you would like to have.
And I have a question too, was provided over the weekend on the five year, multi year. And without going out past next year, there's a gap of 5.3 million, which is a 5.5 cent tax increase that's sort of slated for next year. And I think there's still some room for conversation on allocation of the budget, even this 1.3 million, because there is ostensibly 30 full time positions added in this budget, even though they're not all going to be all added at the beginning of the fiscal year. And so one of my questions is in that 5 million that is the gap next year, what is the breakdown between like salaries and equipment and C I P investment? I know you don't have that off the top of your head because, you know, you would. But I do have concerns that we are swinging the pendulum very, very hard into salaries and positions, which over time are an increasing expenditure in the sense that they are an expense. And then they're growing by three to 5% a year. But in this budget, we also aren't making sort of comparable investments in our capital improvement projects. I think that the street resurfacing and the traffic calming is significant. But that also probably merits looking at and breaking down some things that we already sort of know in the future will require tax increases or significant fee increases, particularly stormwater. And when you have a situation where we have found money, we'll call it, it's probably prudent to invest that money and also have it sit in a fund and it can grow and earn interest and grow versus growing in the expense direction. We know we're going to need to form some type of stormwater utility in the next few years. It seems like we could go ahead and start putting some of that money away. I think one of my other concerns with regards to the swing towards operations and the investments in salaries is that some of those positions, again, won't be filled for the full year next year, but all that money is going into the next year's, the year after's budget. And so then we've exploded our expenditures on the salary side. And then we've got to come up with the money to do a lot of these capital projects that, just based on the list and the time window, we don't have the debt capacity to support that list. One of my bigger concerns with the lack of investment in the C I P and capital projects and saving is the allocation of funds for fire stations in the future and fire. I think that there's an opportunity to take some of this funding and save it and stash it away and let it grow along with our other debt money. To that, I'll let, we can go back around, but I think there, we did have a balance in each budget of operating expenses and capital investment. The 8.5 cent that's going in there that used to be the revenue savings plan isn't really growing to meet the needs of the future. And while we have the opportunity, we should probably set some of those funds aside for some of those capital projects. Because while we may think we can do a bond in the future, bonds come with interest costs. So even the bond we passed, $69 million, is about 110 million to pay back. So the sooner we can save for some of these things, the less of a tax burden we're creating in the future to have to fund debt to fund some of these projects. That's my only comment right now. Seed the flower to my fellow council member.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back around. I've gathered a few notes here I want to expand on as well. And Mr. Vance?
I have nothing to add. I will say again, thanks for the hard work through the Budget Committee and everything that you brought forth to us this year and with the corrections that have been made. And that's all I want to say at this moment. That's it.
Thank you. Before I start with another round here, I want to kind of ask the same question that Mr. Dillinger was referring to. Maybe this is time to talk about it. Anytime somebody says we're laying the foundation for a larger tax increase next year, that gets my attention. That is a very legitimate question. Should we be saving some money? Should we be doing something that doesn't automatically put us behind the eight ball a year from now? I think this has to do with the five year projections. Could you address that, that kind of concern a little bit for us?
So I will remind all of you that in last year's multi year model, we were projecting over a four cent increase for FY26. And then we did not need to have a tax increase. The thing about the multi year model is it's based upon information at a point in time. And so we do take all of the information in, project it out. Right now, based upon the information that we have, the model is telling us because of the investments that we're having to make for these priority projects, there will be some additional expenses required in next year's budget. But we also continue to evaluate our growth, which has just been really exponential. And we will, we will start looking at this in the fall to determine what our, what our property tax revenue will start looking like and whether that five cents is really five cents or if it's some other number.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it is hard to predict the future. Who would have predicted that Garner would have grown over 10% in population from 2023 to 2024? That's what the Census Bureau just gave us. Made us the top 10 fastest growing cities and towns in America. Over 10% growth from 2023 to 2024. Some of that resulted in property taxes. It involves new buildings, new businesses, new houses. And maybe we had more revenue coming in than we guessed a year and a half ago. So that's the difficult part, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, thank you. That's very important concern. Well, let's run back around again and see if any other questions or comments came up. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I understand that projection, where it is projections. And so that's a difficult job to have. I hate, I don't think anybody here would want that job because if the interest rate dropped by one point, that whole program is going to go nuts trying to configure everything. If it's two points, who knows where it'll be? And so, because it will challenge the economy. And but to Mr. Dillinger's point, you know, some savings don't ever hurt. So we're looking at maybe the fall, if you're thinking about sitting down and looking at things, maybe we all should kind of get together and say, you know, next year, maybe when we do our next budget, we won't see about setting up a little something to put a little something away for whether it's fire, emergency services, whatever those things are, and let that accumulate, invest it wisely, which I know we will do anyway, and maybe start that process. Is it an overnight fix? No, but I think it would put us in the right direction if we're thinking that way down the road there. It's better to save for it than try to tax it back up. And that's not counting all the growth we got coming in. So a lot of what ifs. But again, I'm fine with everything here, Mr. Mayor. And I think our staff has done a good job. It's been a process and that's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton, round two.
Well, to Mr. Dillinger's point, if we're going to save money, we need to save it this year. We can't wait till next year because if you're going to have a five cent tax increase next year, that doesn't look good to say, oh, we're going to increase your taxes five cent. Oh, we're going to stick $2 million aside for something in the future. That's not going to work with your voters very well. So, you know, the time to set aside and look at some of these C I P projects would be now. Again, and Ms. Warren's right, because this year projected four cent and it's not there. We had the growth and property taxes were higher than anticipated and sales tax were higher. Now, they may flatten out with the economy and tariffs and so forth. We don't know that yet. But yeah, the time to save is if you're going to look to setting your money aside for capital projects and future debt would be this year, not next year, when you're going to have a proposed tax increase. That's not the time to do it. And we may not have a tax increase next year, but sometime in the projections, it shows that in the next it shows that in the next five years, including this year, that you would need additional money. Depending on the tax revaluation, which looks to be every two years now. And, and when Mr. Kennedy was here and talked to us, he said that they were looking at five percent a year, just as a guess, of what it may be, not fifty-four percent like, you know, happened this year with the revile, which is stated here on our chart. So uh, you know, whether it's five cent or four cent or twelve cent, we don't know. It's out of our control. But anyway, if you can look to be prepared for some capital projects, uh, the time would be to do it would be in this year's budget to ease the burden of future uh, debt or projects. I mean, we, we've seen some of the CIP and we've, we've got to have a public works facility sometime in the next few years. And that's projected at forty million dollars. That's, you know, that's a lot of money and it can be done through a bond project. And the last few bond, couple of bond projects in Lake County last year didn't do too well. So it's something to consider. So anyway, I'll, I'll let someone else talk.
Good observation. Mr. Mayor, any further questions, comments?
No, just a comment. Um, every year we have a host of new variables and that's, that's not going to change. It's always going to be there. And uh, again, I want to thank staff for doing the professional job you've done to meet um, those questions that had been brought up and to give us a path forward.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, and just to reiterate the uncertainty of the future, there is tremendous amount of future uncertainty of the economic front at the national level. In looking at Wake County's budget process, they've made accommodations for belt tightening uh, in the county in their budget. Uh, the general assembly itself is looking at a fiscal cliff over the next couple of years. And so I, I think again, to really evaluate the opportunity that's present now to save some money, really would recommend a setting aside half a million dollars a year for future fire and public safety, uh, CIP. We could generate eight million dollars in revenue over ten years with no tax increase. If you, if you put an interest bearing somehow earning three to five percent a year, you would save five million dollars over the comparable amount financed through bonds. So you kind of got to put it away, let it do its thing, let it grow out of sight, out of mind. Uh, I don't want us to, or future council to be in a position of having to pick one critical CIP need over another to the detriment of the quality of life that people are expecting as they move to this, this now boom town, I guess. I think the same could be said about stormwater, setting aside two hundred thousand dollars a year starting now for a project. We already know that we will be needing to fund over the next few years and we're actually probably behind in funding. Could comparably save, you know, three million, three point two million dollars with no tax increases if we started saving now. And whether those funds get used as a cash fund or they're paying positions, we could have some discretion with that. Um, but we're investing versus losing money uh, if we're setting some of those funds aside. So I think it is, it is a proper conversation in, in debate to consider whether we want to save or we want to spend. I think thirty full-time positions in one budget is a lot of positions. And that really pops up in next year's budget. There, there, there's not a lot of uncertainty as to whether or not those positions will be in next year's budget. They'll be in next year's budget as full-time positions, all thirty of them. I think if I had to guess, I'd say the bulk of that large percentage of that tax increase would be operational versus uh, CIP uh, or capital investment. So again, I would like us to consider making some investments to save money and earn money, earn interest by setting the money aside. Just as a balance and counterbalance to the overall budget. It's not a large percentage out of the nearly ten million dollar increase in the budget this year. Very little of our, that ten million is going into, into savings or back into fund balance. So I think it, it merits some more conversation and, and analysis. It's a polished policy decision. Still doesn't require tax increase. So I would, I would make those two firm recommendations for investment to sort of uh, make those early investments in those two critical needs in infrastructure and public safety.
Thank you. Mr. Vance?
No further questions.
Okay. Uh, well, again, just to re- repeat some of the observations Mr. Dellinger, Mr. Singleton made. It kind of boils back to the same kind of decisions we all have to make in our households month after month, year after year, no matter what stage of your life you're in. How much do we save for what we want today? How much do we put aside for that rainy day, which may or may not come? Uh, how, how do we budget for savings? And so just in the broader sense, uh, Ms. Miller, Ms. Warren, can you kind of speak to that? How do, how much do we save? How much should we save? Where are we on the continuum of, of, of spending it all on, on RVs and speedboats this year instead of putting it in our IRA?
And I'll let Ms. Warren speak first and then I'll add. So I will remind you that at the work session, we did talk to you about um, doing a fall work session on capital. Um, I think that work session will help us, will help guide that conversation. We do set aside eight and a half cents every year towards debt service. That amount does grow. Davenport did model it to uh, resolve for the same number that it would under the revenue savings plan. And when we were before you in April, David presented that we're actually doing a lot better. So we're, that, that pot of money is growing. At the work session, we did present to you um, some information on fund balance. So we are continuing to exceed our policy on fund balance. So I think that we are where we need to be right now until we've got some further direction on, on where council wants to go on capital, which we can accomplish at the work session that we're hoping to have in the fall.
Okay.
And, and I would add, um, Mayor and members of council, I think an important piece of this conversation is our work that we need to do with our financial advisors at Davenport in terms of looking at really what is our capacity for future capital projects. And we, I talked about this in terms of an opportunity to, to really look at CIP, not so much what's been programmed and planned for next year or the year after, but thinking about the larger CIP and some of what we were calling our horizon projects that we know we need to address and determine strategies on, on how best to do that. And so I think we're, they're in agreement that there's an opportunity to do that work and look ahead and figure out strategies. The question then becomes, is the decision that council needs to make to approve next year's budget need to include some sort of strategy that we haven't yet vetted or reviewed? I would also share with council, um, the recommendations for the additional spending really came out of the discussions that council has had over the last few months in terms of budget priorities and interest. The resurfacing has come up several times as a need to, to increase that budget. Also, traffic calming is another opportunity to put some dollars annually towards that as we hear from residents a lot that they're concerned about traffic and want to make sure that we can have safe roadways. And then the last part of it really looks at from, from majority is our parks and recreation opportunities. Uh, we know we have waiting lists for, for some of our leagues, working with our partners. And we need more uh, field space, gym space, those kind of things to be able to, to meet the needs of our waiting list. And there's demand there. We just need to make sure we put resources in order to expand those services. Looking at things like our, um, how we provide um, services to be more inclusive in our programming and our facilities. All those things we have talked about as being important priorities for parks and recreation and, and the recommended uh, items that are uh, recommended for funding that came from the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources staff addressed some of those things. So it really, it really comes down to a decision point of do we want to fund the priorities and things that we've identified in terms of our discussion through the budget that really impact the operating and, and do the work on the capital as we've shared with council through the summer and through the fall? Or would council want to do some sort of set aside um, in next year's budget um, for, for capital before we have the information we need?
Um, this is, this is important stuff. Uh, we, we can't thank you enough for bringing it to us, helping us make decisions. Uh, the work that's been done behind the scenes, the consultants that you've used or, or other experts that compare our town budget and savings to others. And are we, are we seeing, are we looking forward to the future in a prudent and physically conservative way? I'm kind of hearing from you two, we, we seem to be hitting all the, the judgment points that are standard in the industry for not only spending for today, but saving for tomorrow in a prudent way. I'm kind of hearing that.
Yes, I, I would agree with that statement.
Okay. Uh, and, and again, this is important stuff. I'll run down uh, the, the council members one more time for further observations or questions?
None.
Mr. Singleton?
Well, in relation to Davenport, I've been with them since the get-go when they came on here. So I understand what they do and how they do it. And you know, yes, we're setting eight and a half cents aside. But remember, if it wasn't for that idea from Mr. Kennedy, our tax rate would be a whole lot higher than fifty-two cent. Pay our debt service. So that is set aside to pay the debt service mainly our bond referendums, uh, bond that were passed by the public. That, that helps to pay for that. So that's kind of designated. There's only two ways to do capital projects in the future. And that is for a bond referendum, which would, the public, if they supported, say it's okay, raise taxes, it's going to raise so much money for this project. Or if they don't do it, then you do a tax increase anyway. And that uh, is, you know, usually going to meet with a lot of, a lot of happy folks out there. So I know how it works. I've been doing this a long time. And again, if you want to save money, you can save money. You know, I have information, you set it aside because we're saving money in this proposed budget because you got twelve FTEs a year to park and they're not going to be hired. So we're going to have a lot of, a lap salary or money that's not going to be used. This is not, you know, not, not new to the game here. So it's just, you, you want to save some or not. And then again, whoever's in the council next year coming here and this discussion was had and this is why we need to raise taxes. Two cents, three cents, five cents, whatever. You're not going to save money then. So uh, because even Peter usually think of directing those increase in tax, in taxes to a specific cause or plan or whatever, whether it's a CIP or more staffing or whatever needs to be done. So it depends if you want to stick a little aside for savings, uh, because you, we know there will be additional debt service, whether it's a CIP project uh, in, in the future, you know, all of, as we know that the escalation of the cost of all these projects has just been tremendous and they're not getting cheaper. So that's the concern is that, uh, and again, we, we've got to touch, one day talk about stormwater, whether it's a stormwater treaty or something because what's under the ground that nobody can see is got to be upgraded and got to be, you have to, yeah, I mean, there are, we have some older neighborhoods. That brings up built in the forty and fifties and on up. And you have stormwater infrastructure that's going to have to be replaced one day. So we have to remember that, whether it's a fee or however we do it. So I'd be quite, I'd, I'd damn glad, because I mentioned about the street resurfacing and glad to see that because that's the top part we do see and people do like to make sure, whether it's resurfacing or whether it's the micro sealing or whatever we do to make the roads last longer, uh, that is a very important part of the plan. And uh, staff, public works does a really good job of managing that every year. So that's, that's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger, other comments?
A question on, we have, the streets of resurfacing and traffic calming, yes, have been discussed. The amounts, however, and at this magnitude have, have not. And my question around the street resurfacing at the five hundred and forty-four thousand and the extra traffic calming at a hundred thousand, bringing a total of two hundred thousand a year. How are those monies sort of accounted for year to year? Are those going into dedicated funding streams for those projects? Or are they going into sort of, they, you say they are?
Yes, they're going into the dedicated um, accounts.
Yeah. So two hundred thousand dollars a year for traffic calming. I love traffic calming as much as anybody in Garner. It's a little excessive. Uh, the street resurfacing, I think again, is a, is a need that was identified. But in this amount too, we're, we're talking here about six hundred thousand dollars that already has some level of funding already attributed and allocated to it in the budget. It, it's just there's an appetite to save money and decrease taxes in the future. Or there isn't. Yeah, it's just uh, to, to not put some of that money away for already identified, we've already town manager mentioned, we'd already identified critical needs, one of them was stormwater. And you know, we have these funding needs. We've discussed in retreats and work sessions. This is an investment in things that we already know we need to be investing in. I would just strongly recommend that we start investing in them now while we have this really rare opportunity to do that. That won't come again. It probably won't come again. If five and a half cent tax crease in, in next year's budget, maybe even less than that, be more than that. We don't really know. Uh, but even in a flat budget, there's not going to be the opportunity next year to save because we will be bringing online for full year thirty, well, probably thirty plus whatever other increases there are on top of it uh, in the next year's budget. So it's all going to be salaries. So I'll leave that out there. The only other recommendation I would make is I really think that out of a sense of equity and alignment in looking at the merit pay and cost of living adjustments, I think it really makes a lot of sense to make those cost of living adjustments larger for our lower paid employees as a, as a dollar amount. And come up with some type of tiering so that folks who are making less are getting more of a benefit. A flat three percent across your forty thousand dollar employee and your two hundred thousand dollar employee, it seems and sounds fair. But the reality is folks who are making less, it's less of an increase for them and they eat the same amount of food, they cost the same, they put the same gas in their cars. They pay for the same childcare. If we could find a way to equitably and fairly have those cost of living adjustments skewed for larger increases for our employees who are making under a hundred thousand dollars a year, I think it makes it more impactful on our employees and the town. Uh, and they get that, take more money home in their paycheck every, every week or every month. So I really would strongly encourage before we adopt anything tonight to consider that. Uh, done some analysis on it. If you did it in a certain way, it'd actually save us a little bit of money. But that is something I think that goes to the core of, of being fair and looking out for folks who, who are working just as hard as everybody else. I'll lea-, I'll leave it there. Just something to think about. It's not out of the blue. I've mentioned this to some folks, so I put it out there for conversation and consideration in this year's budget.
Thank you. Mr. Vance, comments, questions?
No questions.
Well, we've covered a lot of ground. This, this is extremely important stuff. We, we live or die by the decisions we make here. We, we get ready to build future fire stations or we get ready to raise taxes. It all has to do with decisions we make every year. So thanks for the hard work that everybody's put into this. I think the purpose of this section tonight was to get exactly this kind of feedback, looking for some type of direction from council about which ways to go. That's a pretty broad question. So I'll, I'll ask for one more summarizing remark, maybe from our, our leaders, town manager, our budget director, any other observations you could make at this time?
No other observations, just to confirm that we're looking for guidance from a majority of council this evening on how to prepare the budget ordinance for your meeting on the seventeenth.
Okay. And I think at our request, you've even given us a sample or two of motions that could be made that we have in front of us here. We looked at that. Uh, there's option one that specifies the seven items and the actual uh, details that we've looked at here of the signatures. Uh, there's motion two that is a little more general that would break this down in a further way. I guess I'm looking to council, uh, to see if we can get a motion and a second uh, directed toward giving guidance. Mr. Matthews?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to, to move this forward. I'll move that the, we direct staff to prepare the FY twenty-six budget ordinance to reflect allocating the one point three eight million towards the additional expenses recommended by the staff listed below.
Okay. Uh, I believe the rest of council members are looking at the sample motion that was here and Mr. Matthews? and Mr. Matthews just made this motion to give that guidance to staff as they move into the final two weeks of working on the budget work here. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. Okay, now we can have a little more discussion on the specific motion that's been made, particularly if it's to enhance or reinforce some of the observations that have already been made. Are there any other comments or questions, discussion, we'd like to have about that guidance? Okay. Hearing none. Then we have a motion and a second on the floor to give this guidance to council, to the staff going forward. And we can take a roll call vote on this. Mr. Matthews, you made the motion, you have the honor of voting first.
Aye.
Mr. Singleton?
No.
Ms. Behringer?
Aye.
Mr. Dillinger?
No.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes by three to two vote, that is the guidance. Please keep in mind, as we work on this for the next couple of weeks, all of the ideas have been presented, not just by us here tonight, but through all your study, all the conversations we've had. There's always that balance. How much do we save? How much do we spend now? Thank you for your hard work. And that concludes that portion of our meeting here tonight. We move along to item number three on the hearings and new human resources committee and advisory board appointment recommendation. And the presenters will be our...
Excuse me, Mayor, we have one more item under new old business before the appointments are legislative updated.
Oh, excuse me, I had so many notes, I couldn't even find them there. Thank you, I was trying to make notes what everybody said. Thank you, legislative update. I knew we wanted to get that legislative update. Does anybody know what's going on in the legislature, state or federal? If you do, please share with me. And it looks like Mr. John Hodges, our assistant town manager, and maybe Jody Miller, our town manager, is going to weigh in on this very touchy subject.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I've asked Assistant Manager Hodges to provide a brief update to council on some of the legislative happenings that impact the town of Garner. If you recall, a little over a month ago, we shared with council some updates to the town's legislative agenda, based on some recent actions and legislation that had been introduced that may impact the town. Just want to provide council with an update as to where those items stand, and they make you aware of any other outstanding issues that we just need to keep our eye on. So I'm going to ask Mr. Hodges to review that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Good evening, Mayor and council members. A couple of things have transpired since we were last providing an update to you. The legislature has completed the function that's called crossover, which is a time in which bills that have crossed from one chamber over into the other have an opportunity to continue moving forward. There are several things that we've been watching that did not cross over during that period, but there are often ways that those things can get added into budget, budget legislation, or other ways that they may still stay alive. So even if we report to you that something did not meet crossover deadline, just know that there's an opportunity that it still can move forward. One of the things that we have discussed with you previously was a bill that was limiting ETJ expansions in Wake County. We had some discussion with you at your work session about this. At that time, there was a decision for us to just suspend any of our activity on moving forward with our ETJ to see what happened in the legislature. That is one of the bills that did meet crossover. It has not moved from, it moved from the House to the Senate, but it has not had any additional movement in the Senate since April 1st, or the beginning of April. So we will continue to monitor that and let you know if we see anything specific that happens with that. However, no matter the outcome of that particular legislation, there are a number of pieces of legislation this year that either are attempting to limit or remove ETJ. And so just whether or not it's a bill that was specific to Wake County or not, it will be until the final days of the session or until a budget passes before we know whether there'll be anything that will significantly change ETJ for us and for our neighbors. So if you will, stay tuned on ETJ.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question. In the event, it does not move forward, I've said it, there's a lot of what ifs, I understand. And basically, it dies there. How does that impact where we're at today? Nobody does anything, or we just...
I think, no matter what happens with that particular bill, if it does not move forward, as I mentioned, there are several other things at play that could change ETJ for the state, for select sized municipalities and others. So I think it would be hard to answer right now. I guess what I could say is that if you're asking if there's no legislative changes that would prohibit ETJ in the future, you know, what would we do? And I think we'd want to come back to council and revisit the discussions that we've had previously after consulting with the county and other partners before we make determined next steps.
Okay, thank you.
There was also an omnibus development bill, House Bill 765, that we've reported to you on, and we added it specifically to our updated legislative agenda. That bill has had some changes. At one point in time, one of our representatives, Ms. Johnson-Hostler, had signed on as a sponsor of that bill. So we spent some time with her to help her understand some of the challenges that that bill posed for us. And I think that there was some sponsorship of that bill, because what was added, there was a fix added to it that would fix the down zoning bill that we reported on to you last year that was causing some challenges. And I think a part of 765 was attempting to correct that. And so I think that gained some sponsorships. And then we spent some time with Ms. Johnson-Hostler to help her better understand that even though that was a positive, there were many things that were negative. So she has, as I understand it, she has withdrawn her sponsorship of that bill after spending time with us, and we've extended invitation for her to come and spend some time with us after the session dies down some, so that we can talk some more about how some of those unintended consequences could play out in the future. And so she said she would take us up on that. The bill has had some changes. There's been a committee substitute for some of the language. So some of the things that were of concern maybe have lessened some, but there are still some things that would cause, that cause some severe concern for staff. There are some time limitations, if it moves forward with the current language that's proposed, that would require staff to review plans that are considered complete in a very short period of time. There are also some parts of that bill that would force elected bodies, such as yourself, to make a decision on cases within a very short timeframe as well. So that's just a small list of some of the things that we are still concerned about with 765, should it move forward the way it does now. That bill, in its current form, did not make crossover. However, a strategy that is often used was invoked, and a financial matter was added to that in the form, I believe, of a fee. But anytime legislation has some financial implication, it can get easily added to the state budget. Things that don't really have a financial impact can sometimes show up in the budget, but it's more likely that things, when you see that someone specifically adds a financial element to a bill that was not moving, it's a pretty good sign that there's a, that's sort of an indicator that that might be a tactic that is used. So again, we'll stay tuned to see how that comes out in the budget discussions. Our two local bills did not make crossover. So you may recall, we had a local bill that it would extend the signature authority, settlement authority for the manager. That has to be a local bill, because it has to change the town's charter. And then also, we had, we brought back a bill about digital advertising, and neither of those have moved forward. So again, that does not mean that there is no hope for them to move forward, it would just have to get, they would have to get added in some way to a bill that did meet crossover. And those amendments to other bills and tagging things together do happen, so we don't say that those are completely out of the question, but we don't have a clear path forward as those bills individually did not make crossover. That's all the particular updates I had tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can, and then if there's anything that Ms. Miller or Ms. Jones would like to add, we'll recognize them as well.
Thank you.
I don't have any additional updates to share.
Okay, well, that concludes the legislative update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now, we get to part three, which is the Human Resources Committee. And actually, what that is, advisory board appointment recommendations. And I believe we will be looking to our two council members who head up our HR committee, Mr. Vance and Mr. Dillinger.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say thank you to the hard work that the Human Resource Committee's put together in reference to doing the interviews in quick succession of some very strong candidates to fill upcoming vacancies. So I want to say thank you to everyone who has been involved with that endeavor, Mr. Dillinger, and also Ms. Rebecca Murray, who's been engaged with the interview process. And this evening, I'd like to make recommendations, recommendations from the Human Resource Committee to appoint the following. Each will serve a three-year term, which expires June 30th, 2028. Amanda McClousky, Arthur Day, Cameron Hayes, to the Parks and Rec Cultural Resources Advisory Board. Herbertina Johnson, Carla Adams, to the Senior Advisory Committee. Steve Rivel and Russell Kessler, to the Veterans Advisory Committee. I would like to move to have these individuals to be placed on the various advisory committees as stated.
Oh, second that.
Okay, you've done a lot of hard work. Are any of those folks here this evening, would you stand up and just let us see what a bona fide volunteer looks like? Thank you so much for the time and your willingness to help, and thanks also to the other individuals who couldn't be here this evening, who will be working hard for the next three years under your leadership.
Yes, sir, can I ask her to state her name, please? Can I ask her to state her name?
Could you, would you state your name, please?
Yeah, I'm Amanda. I'm in the...
Okay, Amanda.
Thank you. You're on one of the fund committees, right?
Yes.
Parks and Rec, everybody loves that. Okay, and back to you, Mr. Vance, is there, are we asking for a motion?
Yes, a motion has been made by myself and seconded by Mr. Dillinger.
Well, I'm not even going to ask for any more discussion, because I know we're in agreement with the decisions that you made over there. So I'm going to call a voice vote on this. As council members all in favor of approving this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing that passage unanimously. Thank you for the hard work. Thanks for all the volunteers who are here tonight and who are watching from home. We really appreciate what you're doing. These are important eyes and ears for all of us to pay attention to all the things that the town does. We need your perspective. Thank you very much. Okay, and that brings us to committee reports, and we'll give Mr. Vance a chance to catch his breath just a moment, and we'll come down here to Mr. Matthews. I'm sure you have something to report from your committee.
Yes, sir, I do appreciate the HR committee, the two gentlemen, to the Veterans Advisory Committee. I do know them well, fine military people and they're worker bees, and you guys did good picking those guys out. We're going to put them to work next Monday.
Yes, sir.
And appreciate Maria out there stepping up and helping us out on some things and our attorneys. So we're looking for great things, to be more involved, and the selection of these two gentlemen will help us move in that direction. I appreciate it.
Good, thank you. Mr. Singleton, any committee reports?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
I'd like to echo Mr. Matthews' congratulations or appreciation of the committee members reported. The senior citizen advisory committee has been needing to have positions refilled for quite a while, and we're almost caught up now. So thank you, thank you for getting us there. I understand from the lady who runs the senior center that she's enjoyed these new appointees quite a bit, that they have a good sense of humor.
Good.
The second thing is that the public art committee will meet in June, on June 18th, at 5:30 at the Garner Women's Club to determine next steps.
Excellent, good news. Mr. Dillinger?
No reports.
Mr. Vance, any more committee reports?
No, sir. Not this moment.
All right, well, we'll move right along to manager reports.
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder that work on a major bomb project, the White Oak Roundabout, has begun. The work will necessitate closure of the east end of Ackerman Road and north end of Heburn Church Road, beginning on the 16th. We are going to do our very best to make sure people are aware of the closures and be able to plan accordingly. You can find information about detours and project updates at the town's website at garnernc.gov. The closures will be about three or four months, depending on the weather or any other unforeseeable variables, but White Oak Road will remain open the whole time. So just want to continue to remind the community about that. We're excited this project is starting, but it will be, for a short period of time, we will have to sort of deal with delays and closures and detours, and just make sure that residents can plan accordingly and have the most up-to-date information by checking out our website. That's all I have to share with the council this evening. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions for our town manager? Okay, thank you. We'll move right along to attorney reports.
No report, I have plenty to talk to you about in closed session this evening.
Can't wait. That'll be exciting. Now, that brings us back to council reports, not just about committee, but I'll start with Mr. Matthews, this time any other council report.
No, sir.
Mr. Singleton?
Want to mention that the Highway 50 Bridge Construction Project, Tall Grass is at the intersection of Mumpsed Lane and Highway 50, the northwest quadrant. You're standing there. The bridge is on the west side, and it's not where they're building the bridge, it's where the former Williams House used to be on the corner. The grass, the one side got cut and the other side didn't, so if they could get that cleaned up, it's kind of messy looking.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anything else?
That's all.
Ms. Behringer?
Yes, there are several properties on Penny Street between Creech Road and Avery Street that are in need of mowing.
Okay, are they on the record that we have listed?
No, not yet.
Are we going to give addresses or ask Public Works to take a look?
It would be Public Works to look at it. It's going to be the 100 to 300 block.
Okay, I bet you we have somebody here who will ride by and look, and I can see them nodding their heads even now. I can see one pointing his finger to the other guy. Thank you, as long as somebody's looking and getting the addresses and taking them. Thanks for bringing it up. Mr. Dillinger, other reports?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Vance, anything else?
Yes, I'd like to amend the statement I made in reference to the HR committee and everyone they helped out. Ms. Stella Gibson was also instrumental as well. She was engaged as well, and I just wanted to make sure that she gets her props.
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, we get a lot of help from our town staff and our deputy clerk, as well as our town clerk. They're doing a great job, and we just keep coming up with more things for them to do all the time, and they always rise to the occasion. Thank you very much.
That's a quick question. Sure. Has Wi-Fi been out tonight? I saw it just pop back on in here.
Let's ask this guy right over here.
Wi-Fi has been out tonight, just popped back on.
That's a good one.
That's all we need to know.
You're correct, you're correct.
My phone's on the computer, and I just looked up, and all of a sudden, it's there, okay.
It wasn't just you.
What does make this?
I was wondering why it was on the front row over there. It's good to have our IT director right here with us. Thank you for getting us back online. Okay, well, if there's no other business on the agenda here, I believe there's some interest, a need for a closed session. Would you like to give us a citation, a motion we can make?
Yes, we're requesting a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute's 143-318.11A3 to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation, and subsection A4 to discuss economic development.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of moving to a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? That passes unanimously. Thanks for your participation tonight. We don't expect you to stick around. We'll be there, we'll be back. You can watch us on TV tomorrow. Thank all of you for coming. Thank all of you for coming.
There is the magic tone. We have returned to the regular session of the Town Council meeting. And I would ask our Town Attorney to give us a summary of what we did in the closed session.
Yes, thank you. Council met with town staff and the Town Attorney to discuss various economic development projects, and also to discuss litigation. And Council provided guidance by consensus, direction and guidance by consensus, and then authorized the Town Attorney to retain outside council to assist with litigation defense.
Excellent summary. Right on track. If there's no other business to be covered this evening, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Mr. Matthews and seconded by Mr. Singleton and Ms. Behringer simultaneously.
All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.